Good evening and welcome to the November 23rd Chatham Select Board Virtual Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID 134208476 or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Just as a reminder for everyone, please mute your mics and turn off your cameras unless you're recognized by the chair. And let's start off with a roll call. Vice Chair Shereen Davis.
Present.
Clerk Corey Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member De Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Jeff Dykens.
Present.
Okay, now let's go over what we're going to do for tonight very quickly. Just the agenda, we'll have our minutes first, then we'll have public announcements and agenda item requests. And I think everyone understands what that is now. We'll then start some of our new business and start off with a coronavirus update. Then we're going to go right into a public hearing. The public hearing, I just found out today that it's going to be continued. The applicant asked for it to be continued, so if anybody's here to speak on it, we're not going to be, we won't be conducting any business on it. We'll then go into public comments on the following business agendas. We're going to consider requests for special one day alcohol permits, there's four of them. We're going to consider an easement on Twine Field Road. We're going to do a revote on the precinct redistricting, and that's really an administrative matter. Then get an update on the Fisherman Storage area. Then consider a request to join a multi-district PFAS litigation. And consider an request for extensions by seasonal alcoholic beverage license. And then consider requests for temporary closings of annual alcoholic licenses. And that's it. So let's start with our agenda. And the first thing up are our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. We have a second. Any comments or questions? Any additions? Dean.
Just have one addition I'd like on page two, under item two, the final paragraph. And the first sentence, first line where it says, Select Board Member De Castro said that organizers are at work. After the word organizers, I'd like to insert the phrase led by Alan Rust, former Monomoy Theater Artistic Director. So led by Alan Rust, former Monomoy Theater Artistic Director.
Okay. Thank you. Let's, any others? If none, let's have a vote. Start with Shereen.
I wasn't here last week, so I'll abstain.
Okay, Jeff.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
And the chair says aye, just following you around my screen, so. Mix them up a little bit. Okay, so next up are public announcements and agenda item requests. I have two that I want to bring up. The first one is an agenda request from the Energy Committee, Energy and Climate Change Committee to give us a briefing on the economic impact of climate change on Cape Cod. It was a study that was done by by Cape Cod Commission. And I support that. I sat through the meeting when they wanted to do it. It's probably going to be about 30 to 30 minutes or so. I do have one other comment, and it's really, I, many of you may have seen it, that Julia Bernstein was 180 years old last July, and she passed away. And I like, we say peacefully and sleeping in her bed and in her home in Chatham on November 18th. She is a well-known figure in Chatham and on Cape Cod. She served in the League of Women Voters of Lower Cape Cod in the eighties, was actively involved in the Cape Cod chapter of the Fellowship of Reconciliation. And that was an international peace group created during World War I. In Chatham, she pushed the previously all-male Chatham Town Ban, we all know her for that, to include women. Helped the Chatham Council on Aging set up a nutrition program for the elderly. And she served on the town's Handicapped Affairs Committee from 1989 to 1992. Julia Bernstein was an activist. She argued for women's rights and international peace. She received the Mercy Otis Warren Cape Cod Woman of the Year Award. And you may recall that last spring, she started a GoFundMe effort. She wanted to stay in her home in Chatham until she died. She had a very sharp mind, but she required round-the-clock care, as was reported in the media. She had a teacher's pension and social security, but could no longer pay for her personal assistance, even with support from her family. She was not eligible for any at-home care for Medicare or Medicaid to cover these expenses. Now, this fund helped and allowed her to stay in her Chatham home. So this is even more so, even in the final months, she thanked all the kind people that helped her. And she remained an activist, highlighting the plight of many elderly that we don't see, Julia, that we really don't see any problems that they do have. Julia, Juliette was a person ahead of her time who made a remarkable difference. And I would say, Chatham, thanks you, Julia Bernstein, please rest in peace. That's all I have. Does anybody else on the board have any agenda items? Or comments? No? Anybody in the public? Seeing none, let's continue on with a coronavirus update. Dr. Bob.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quickly, an update on tonight's coronavirus situation. Let me share my screen here. And up first, I have our figure which shows the monthly cases since the beginning of the pandemic, roughly in March of 2020. So far in March of this, sorry, so far in November of this year, 2021, we've had a total of 29 cases compared to only 13 cases in all of last November. So we are slightly over double the case count from last year. Of those 29 cases so far this month, 22 have been in vaccinated individuals, two have been in not vaccinated individuals. And for five individuals, the vaccination status is unknown. So as you can see from the graph, we are experiencing an uptick in cases, which is consistent across Cape Cod and predominantly New England. And we haven't even entered the holiday season yet. We're just getting there very quickly, starting on Thursday. But as you know, last year, we did have an upsurge in cases post Thanksgiving that lasted through into March, basically of last year. So hopefully, with more and more people being vaccinated, more and more people getting their second dose and/or their booster shot, hopefully, we don't see quite as severe a surge as we saw last year. Quickly to show the percent positivity figure, we are seeing an uptick there. And frankly, we are right back where we were with the surge that we saw in late August and early September. You know, this time of the year, we contributed to people spending more time indoors as opposed to the surge we saw earlier that really didn't have a specific cause to it. But as we all know, this Delta variant is much more contagious. We're seeing much more in-house, in-family transmission as well as a number of transmission situations that appear to have originated with school-aged children being back in school and then bringing it home to either parents or other relatives who may or may not be vaccinated. And then finally, just our average daily incident rate, we're also seeing that spike up as well. We'd expect to see pretty much the same thing when we see an increase in the percent positivity. So I just want to reiterate again to everyone that COVID has not disappeared. Yes, people are vaccinated, so the risk is a little less than last year. But as we're seeing with the increase in cases in Chatham, on Cape Cod, and throughout the state of Massachusetts, it has not gone away. And so I urge everyone to continue to take the appropriate precautions, even if you're vaccinated and you're out in public and going to the grocery store or going wherever, going to the movies or whatnot. The best advice is to continue to wear that mask. If you suspect in any way, shape, or form that you may have contracted COVID, stay home, stay isolated until you can be tested. There are multiple locations to be tested, both through Barnstable County as well as the number of private entities, places like CVS, Walgreens, and others do provide for that testing, which can be done fairly simply. Most results are back in roughly 24, maybe 36 hours. And it's a small inconvenience to know that you do or do not have COVID before you potentially go out and infect others. And I just wanted to make a plug again for that booster shot. The booster shot is now available to anyone ages 18 years of age and older. If you received the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine originally, the booster is recommended anytime after six months after the second dose. And if you received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine originally, the recommendation is to get that booster shot two months after you've received that dose. You can also mix and match the booster. So if you received Pfizer or Moderna originally, you don't have to go to a clinic that only has those, you can get the J&amp;J. And similarly, if you got the J&amp;J, you can get Pfizer or Moderna for your booster shot. Clearly, new data came out from CDC again today indicating how important those boosters are and the level of protection that they, the level of protection boost that they do give you to even folks that, you know, got the vaccine early on. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. I see Dean's hands up.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Bob, for the report. I'm happy to say that I'm getting my booster this week. But I do have a question, as someone who does support vaccination. This, we've had multiple reports now each week where the vast majority of new cases are people that have been, from people that have been vaccinated. You know, 22 out of 29 this week, and it was 10 out of 15, I think, last week. My question is, have the public health authorities, either nationally or in the state, expressed any explanation for this? Why are the most of the cases coming in vaccinated people?
There has been some evidence that vaccinated people tend to let their guard down. You know, they stop wearing masks, they start going to parties, they start going out, they mingle with potentially unvaccinated people. You know, there's a lot of travel going on again, which there wasn't. So really, it's just, you know, as I said, urging people to continue to take the precautions until we get even more people vaccinated. And at some point, hopefully, we get to where this is basically like the flu, you get a vaccine every year. But there definitely has been some data that shows, you know, the vaccine, the initial doses does begin to wear off around that six-month timeframe. And so that's why there's this boost, just because there is still a fairly significant segment of the population that has not been vaccinated at all. And as I said, we're, you know, we're seeing this uptick in pediatric cases. You know, we're now starting to vaccinate the, you know, the five-year age and up. But they're still not, they're all back in school. They are bringing the disease home, if you will. So it's a combination of all those.
Yeah. I mean, I've read in the popular press that, as you've just pointed out, the initial vaccinations do wear off. And I suspect that that's a good part of why this is happening. And it's also a strong, it makes a strong case for why you need to get the booster.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I can think we're headed, and I personally think we're almost there. I suspect some people in Washington don't want to acknowledge it, whatever reasons, but I think we're headed in the direction that, as you outlined, that this is going to be viewed as a mutate into an endemic rather than a pandemic like the flu, where there will be an annual vaccination advice. So anyway, well, thank you for that assistance.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public? I don't see any hands up. Well, thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on to our public hearing. Corey, if you'd open it up with reading it again, and we'll get another opportunity to read it in another few weeks.
Can we reread the?
Yeah, please.
All right. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM, originally on Tuesday, November 16th, and then continued until November 23rd, 2021, to consider a joint petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy to place one jointly-owned stub pole, 76/16S, on the southeast side of Sam Rider Road, across the street from number 115, to accommodate solar project on Middle Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda or by calling 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sign the members of the select board.
Thanks, Corey. And we've been asked to continue this till December 7th. That's right, right, Jill? Still good, December 7th?
So moved.
Yes, they still needed to revise the plans based on the water line. So they wanted to do some extra review for that.
Okay, thank you. I saw Corey made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, let's take a vote. Shereen.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Next up on our agenda are public comments for any of our following business agendas. Does anyone have any public comments? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, let's continue. The first thing up are consider requests for special one-day alcohol permits, and we have four of them. And the first one we have, let me get my glasses on. First one we have has to do with a special one-day alcohol permit on behalf of the Shoe Fits. And CC, is CC here or will it be Shawna?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Shawna. I don't see CC on. These are fairly standard requests for the Christmas Stroll Friday evening and Saturday afternoon.
Okay. I assume I'm going to take them one at a time. Is that right? Or could I? Yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, fine. So can I grab a motion to approve? And we can have a discussion if anybody wants. Jeff.
Yes, I moved to approve the special one-day alcohol permit for wine and malt beverages only to CC Hadower as a representative of If The Shoe Fits LLC for service at 442 Main Street on Friday, December 10th, 2021, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. And Saturday, December 11th, 2021, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Dean.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And Corey.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Let's move on to the next one. It's a special one-day alcohol permit for the Chatham Threadworks, Jen Falvey. And I don't see her on either. Could I have a motion to approve? Jeff.
Thank you, Peter. I moved to approve the special one-day alcohol permits for wine and malt beverages only to Jen Falvey as a representative of Chatham Threadworks for service at 400 Main Street on Friday, December 10th, 2021, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And Saturday, December 11th, 2021, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Second chair, any discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Corey.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
And the chair says aye, going over to the next one. The three is a request for an alcohol permit for Mark, Corinne Blakeney, on behalf of Mark August. Jeff.
Sure. I moved to approve special one-day alcohol permits for wine and malt beverages only for Corinne Blakeney as a representative of Mark August for service at 490 Main Street on Friday, December 10th, 2021, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Assistant Chair.
Jeff. Dean.
Yeah, I just had a question for Shawna. I don't know if the applicant's here. But in the application for the permit, it says that the wine will be served in the front of our store. I assume that means inside the store, right? Inside the structure. Is that correct, Shawna? Not on the line?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, let's take a vote. I'll start with Dean.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And Shereen.
Hi.
Chair says aye. All right, let's go to the last one, which is Jonathan Pratt on behalf of Cape Life Brand Company, who just had a ribbon cutting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Want to make any comments? You're more than welcome to.
No, thank you for coming for the ribbon cutting. We really appreciate it. And like we said, we're really excited to be a part of this community and looking forward to our first Christmas stroll.
Super great. Okay, Jeff.
Sure. I moved to approve special one-day alcohol permits for wine and malt beverages only for Jonathan Pratt as a representative of Cape Life Brand Company for service at 403 Main Street on Friday, December 10th, 2021, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And Saturday, December 11th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
And we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Shereen.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Enjoy.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a private road easement. And Shereen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing myself from this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Shereen. Dr. Bob, you want to give us a couple of comments? It has to do with a private road easement on Twine Field Drive.
Yes, we, the town, as part of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, is getting ready to finalize the design of Phase 1D2A, which involves extending the sewer down Morton Road. which involves extending the sewer down Morton Road and also the lower section of Meeting House Road. From basically where we stopped last time at about Middle Road down to Route 28. And for the area to the west over in Morton Road, we're then going to come through the bike path. And it necessitates a pump station at the bike path with its intersection with Morton Road. We're going to be citing most of the pump station on town property. But there will be a small portion is in the road layout for Twine Field Road. And so as we've done, because Twine Field Road is a private road, as we've done with other private roads where we've put sewer, we need to obtain an easement for that, and so that's the easement that you have before you tonight. For water, sewer, and drainage purposes, although this one, because it involves the pump station, is really just for the sewer portion of it. But as you know, in the past, we've had these easements more broadly just because it provides us the opportunity to address any other issues when we're working on the road. As you can see from the diagram that was included in your packet, it's not the entirety of Twine Field Road, it's really only that section right down by the Morton Road bike path intersection that we're taking. And we did get this afternoon the Appendix A from Town Council, which just provides the detail on the owners and their information. And once the order is signed by the board and reported, we will also notify the owners or their representatives that this action has been taken. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I see Dean's hands up. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. Bob, I do remember when we had multiple easements like this in the area of Shattuck Place and I guess Cross Street. We had attempted to contact people previously to an actual taking in order to see if we could obtain an agreement to provide the easement. And then we had the advice of Town Council, I think, to just go ahead and make the taking because we didn't have enough responses from people. In this case, there are only three affected parcels, it would appear. I'm guessing I wanted to ask, and I've got another question or two. Why we haven't simply tried to, or have we? Contact the property owners to see if we could just do this informally rather than voting in order of eminent domain?
We have not, on the advice of Town Council, you're absolutely correct. When we first started the wastewater project, we did try to reach out to all the individuals and do it that way. Honestly, that became a logistical nightmare. You know, trying to get in touch with people, many of whom are seasonal residents and whatnot, and them having to fill out paperwork and get it notarized and send it back. And so our current Town Council, as well as previous Town Councils, had determined that it's just, it's easier logistically and neater and cleaner. When we go to record it at the registry to just have the board do this order of taking. Again, it's only an easement, it doesn't, you know, we're not taking ownership of any property, we're not taking any ownership of the road. That still remains a private ownership. We're just getting this easement to put the wastewater infrastructure in place.
Okay, I'm looking at the easement plan and on the left side, the very first entry underneath the property owner of Eldridge. It says area easement, 4,149 square feet. Is the easement, I'm trying to understand where exactly the easement is. What's defining the easement here?
The easement is basically, when you look at the figure and you see those two solid lines in the middle that are somewhat curved, that is the layout of Twine Field Road. So the easement itself is actually, or the easements are those portions of Twine Field Road, so it's those areas between those two solid lines, not any of the area off to the side.
Okay, so we don't actually have a road easement there at this?
Yeah, let me just double check the information that I got. Okay, there is that one area, you're absolutely correct, there is that one area that's outside the road layout. It says the state of Lilian Eldridge, the 4,194 square feet. And that may just be an artifact of the way the road itself was laid out, if you will.
Okay, so are these dashed lines, are those? Well, one of them defined, two of them defined the bike path easement down below.
Yeah, the other dashed line is the center line of Twine Field Road because most property owners own to the center line of the road. And so you see there's, so basically the four easements are the one that's Lilian Eldridge. Then the upper portion of Twine Field Road, if you will, is basically divided in two, so there's two easements on that part. And then the lower section is basically one big easement owned by one individual. And it varies, you know, this is one of the less complicated ones. Some of the other roads are very complicated because some people own to the center line, some people own the entire width of the layout. So, yeah.
I guess, I realize it's difficult because we're doing this virtually and there's no board that has a colored defined map, but I'm trying to understand the northward and the southward bounds of this easement.
It's basically between those two solid lines right below the words Twine Field Drive. That, like I said, that is the layout.
That is the
Twine, yeah.
That's the layout anyway.
That's the layout, and so we're basically taking the layout, the easement is within the layout, yes.
Okay, okay. And you're saying, is it all, there's also a okay, okay, I get it now. It's interesting that under the second parcel at the top on the north side, Darcy's Secret. It says fee interest in the road was not conveyed.
Right, so there, yeah, so the Darcy's Secret parcel, the property line goes down to the road layout and stops. So they don't have any fee interest in the road layout, so.
Okay. All right, everybody knows it's the central line.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you for answering these questions.
I see Jeff's hands up.
Yeah, I had exactly the same questions that Selectman Castro had. I was just trying to figure out what the easement's bounds were or weren't, and I, my understanding is that it's demarcated by those solid lines, which is actually the Twine Field Drive. And then also, at the beginning of that Twine Field Drive, a little area that's called Area Easement 4,149, a little piece that's in the south end of that, okay. And that's it, that's it.
That's it, yep.
It was kind of difficult to figure out, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve and sign the order of taking as has been presented by the town staff.
Dean, a second?
Tag it.
Okay. No more discussion, let's have a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is a revote of our precinct redistricting, and is Julian? This time we didn't keep her waiting for an hour, two hours.
Happy to be here. This is a revote, I'm back. Everything was in order from your last vote, but the Secretary of State just wanted to clean up the language of where the dividing lines were. It doesn't change the dividing lines at all, it doesn't change anything other than the language is clearer than it was before. That's all.
Back to see what the difference was, and it's, yeah, it's clear.
Yeah. It's what they want, so.
That's right. Okay, any questions from the board or comment? No? Let's go for a vote. The guy, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman?
Dean?
I move that the board vote to accept and sign the reprecincting memo. I'm sorry, I move that the board vote to accept and sign the reprecincting document as presented by the town clerk.
Thank you, Dean. We have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, let's go for a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Julian.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to come into the town offices and sign this again? Do we say no? Okay.
No. Okay.
We can do, we can do that your signatures, your stamp signatures should be fine.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Fisherman Storage Update. I saw Terry on.
Mr. Chairman, I need, I'll be recusing myself from this agenda item as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Terry, I see Corey's picture.
Sorry, I was there for a second, but I clicked the button and I disappeared, so I apologize for that.
Okay, this is an update on a Fisherman Storage area, and you had a few test fits. You want to give us a little background on that?
Sure, I'll give a little quick overview or just, and again, for the public's information as well, just, so in your package, I included you know, some basically the full backup documentation from the previous presentation back on October 19th, where you know, we went through the process and basically zeroed in on the area we're going to talk about in more detail tonight. And you know, essentially, it's the Water Pollution Control Facility Transfer Station Parcel. So again, based on, you know, the screening criteria that I presented, the final results of at the October 19th meeting, you know, since that time, we've continued to look at a couple of areas, and I'm going to share my screen right now, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, and again, these are the, you know, the graphics that are in your package document. So again, as we've refined kind of the more detailed areas on the Water Pollution Control Facility Transfer Station Parcel, kind of found two areas to the, let's call it the west and then the northeast corners of the property. But as part of that, and what I noted in the staff report, we did look at trying to test fit basically, essentially, the entire facility as it's configured right now from a you know, area perspective. And we're running into some different issues and also looking a little more closely at some different constraints. And then we wound up looking at some different areas of the property to also with an eye towards trying to find areas that we, you know, could minimize clearing in particular and avoid you know, significant permitting or other challenges. So so again, just to familiarize everybody with the site, again, we're the WPCF area to the western portion of the site, and then the cap landfill transfer station on the eastern portion, and the existing Harbor Master Storage Area, just for general orientation. So we've got Middle Road to the north, and then Water Pollution Facility Control, Water Pollution Control Road to the south. So on this site, as I mentioned, we did start looking at some additional areas, you know, or not additional areas that had more capacity available in areas here or in the northeast corner and also going into the woods and clearing other areas. But after looking at topography, the potential sand filter bed expansion area, we narrowed that down a little bit and also had to narrow most likely what we could accommodate. And are looking at right now, the two test fits that we conducted include what I'm calling the former soil storage area that would have an access off of Middle Road coming down through the existing Harbor Master Storage Area and into the former soil storage area. And I'll go over the details of that in a second. And then also the second location, looking at what I just termed the northeast cap test fit area, so basically would be accessed through the existing transfer station and basically in the area behind the hard to dispose waste kind of platform configuration. So in the first former storage area, former soil storage area test fit, basically, as I mentioned, you know, there are some constraints here that we're working to try to see where we could maybe put this in to minimize grading, filling, cutting. I didn't put the edge of waistline here, but you know, there are concerns with the cap, so we wouldn't be in this kind of scenario with any filling or movement of material would be on top of and not going into any caps, but you do have slopes on both sides here. So this general is the general footprint area where we put the test test fit of, in this one, we were able to get eight of eight plots at 2,500 square feet apiece. And you know, the general concept would be to have a facility that was contained from the perspective of having a fence around it, a perimeter fence, you know, accommodation of you know, vehicles, excuse me, vehicle and trailer drop off, circulation, that type of thing. So what what we have here too is that the general concept for this location would be a fence, a chain link, eight foot high chain link fence with these kind of black lines being barriers, jersey type barriers that could be moved and flexible, you know, depending on the management, you know, could be sized differently as well, you know, depending on demand. But just trying to keep it in the context of, for comparability sake, again, and also the limited space we have available, we did need to reduce our our overall search area. But again, this would include constructing a road with access all the way up to Middle Road and some additional gating to keep people from being able to access the Water Pollution Control Facility and/or the solar array. And there might actually be, probably be another gate at the top of Middle Road as part of this configuration. For the northeast cap area test fit, so this would be, this proposal, we looked at actually placing the material directly on top of the cap landfill. Again, no excavation involved, but they're, you know, trying to work around some of the constraints here. I've highlighted some of the steep slopes here in this area. And then there are some former landfill vent pipes that, again, just trying to stay away from to not trigger any kind of permit issues and also trying to stay out of the the existing vegetated area. So for this, this area, while we didn't get eight plots at 2,500 square feet, did get two plots at excuse me, seven plots at 2,500 square feet and then two half plots, you know, for basically the same amount of storage area. But this, this configuration would require, you know, placing fill or material on top of the cap for access for both getting up the hill and also for area for turning. This configuration because of the slopes. You know, there's some topo here, I'll just point out this. So, you know, here, so again, these are 25 feet, 25 feet deep, and they're dropping you know, close to six, six to eight feet from the black line to this purple line, which represents, you know, some type of retaining. I don't want to call it a structure because most likely to not something that wouldn't necessarily penetrate the cap, but would be on top of it, so maybe something like a large block block system, stacked a couple of high and then, or maybe three, depending on the topo for the specific locations and some fill to have a more level surface. So, and then also some additional considerations here of having some additional barriers, barricades to keep anyone from straying into the cap area. And again, for both practical, practicability issues and then also you know, not to trigger any compliance issues with the landfill closure plan. So that's really, in a nutshell, what the new, or the test fit analysis, you know, that we conducted. In the staff report, you know, there are other things to think about, you know, depending on how to move forward, more with the procurement, management, and those types of things. So is there, there's quite a lot to consider here for moving forward, but I think it probably makes sense to just focus on the, the physical first, you know, and some of the constraints and questions. Then we could probably have some broader discussion on thoughts of some of the other kind of management or cost, cost issues as well.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Terry. That was, that was, that was a good synopsis. What we're looking for, when, Stan, is we're not going to get into a lot of the details, except to understand where we think we want to have it, or look at it, look at, look at, so you can then do a more detailed cost analysis. I gotta turn it over to Corey. He asked for this previously. I just want to make a comment. Just one comment on the, the cap landfill. That's, that, that, you, you can do that without penetrating the landfill and having people transfer all over that. I mean, I have a, that's my only other concern. You don't have to answer that now. Let me turn it over to, that was my first one. And second is, that seems to be a more costly venture from what you're saying. But, okay, Corey?
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Terry, for the presentation and the update. I got a kind of a handful of questions. Because this is not exactly the direction I was kind of going in, but I'm not, you know, I, you know, putting, cutting in roads and changing, you know, filling and grading of areas. It's a little bit more of a heavier lift than the direction that I thought we were going to, you know, potentially have to go into. So a couple of thoughts. I mean, we're peeling, peeling back different layers of this conversation, and I want to back up for, for a moment on one, a couple of things. One, I'm still not crystal clear of how many of the existing tenants would want to participate in a relocation of the Fisherman's Storage Area. I know from the correspondence we've had in our packet and stuff, it seems to be that there's at least two primary Chatham residents, longtime fishing industry individuals who, who've been engaging conversations, and they're, they at the very least are looking for this relocation option. But I believe some of the other tenants may not have responded or may not have been clear on what their status would be if this was an option. So that's one question I throw out there. Obviously, we, we got to go through a policy question of if we do move this forward, who are we doing this for? Are we doing this for all Chatham residents? You know, we obviously have some potential procurement law considerations that we need to take into effect. So I'd like to kind of discuss that a little bit better because, you know, are we looking for something that would accommodate four sites, eight sites, 12 sites? You know, I'm trying to get a number to see, you know, if that, if the potential test fit areas fit the number of entities that we're looking to accommodate. I mean, there's a lot of little details that need to be flushed out, and I totally, I totally respect that. You know, I, I know there's a lot of questions, and I'm looking at it from, from, from maybe different angles than other people are. You know, I, I'd like to see if, you know, for the benefit of the community, if we can get this to work out, because I know with the airport's consideration, you know, we had that, you had a previous graphic that had like a blue overlay of areas, municipal areas that we were kind of limited to, which is where these test areas have come from. Because ideally, I think consolidating this Fisherman's Storage components would be far better for the community than having it scattered, you know, throughout the town. Because by right, all this stuff can go in someone's residence. There's no limitations to that. So by right, this could be North Chatham, South Chatham, West Chatham, in this person's yard, that person's yard. So consolidating this would be to the benefit of, of the community, in my opinion. And then depending on how far, you know, we, we have to get into these particular test areas and the potential cost, the timetable would take to, to, to create this area. And I'm just going to throw this, make, make this comment. I'm sure the Airport Commission is not going to like this. I don't know, the reconsideration of keeping it where it is with different oversight and restrictions makes, makes, makes another option, at least for discussion purposes. So, you know, I appreciate the work that's been put into the updates. There's, you know, it's philosophically, I, I stand that I like to support the, the local Chatham fishermen, taxpayers that reside in this community, that are making their living, that have, you know, some of these individuals have done this for, for, you know, generations and, you know, considerable amount of time. So, you know, there's obviously been some hiccups in the process with some of the maintenance and upkeep of the current location. But if we can move forward in a way to manage things better and, you know, create a better location, or maybe keep it where it is, I don't, I don't know. I'd like to do this in a, in a timely fashion without breaking the bank, because I don't think we, you know, cutting a road in is probably not an inexpensive little project. So, and I don't know where the funds would come from. So, you know, like I said, I appreciate this update, and I look forward to comments and questions from my other board members. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? I'll make one comment, though. I'm not sure, Corey, whether or not, oh, I see Jeff's hands up. Go ahead, Jeff, and then Dean. Ah, you're on mute. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think Selectmen Matters asked a critical question. You know, how many of the fishermen really are willing to move and what kind of square feet do they need? That's, we need to know kind of how to size this thing. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, that the only areas that satisfied the constraints that the Airport Commission and the FAA were articulating were those very areas that you identified in your report, which left us with this, this cap area or this soil storage area. Is that a fair statement? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, so if I, so if I could talk to that broader question and maybe hopefully hit Corey's question too. So essentially, the, you know, the wildlife habitat assessment that was conducted found that the existing area is essentially a wildlife attractant. So that's a, it's something that, you know, needs to be, you know, a distance and, you know, definitely can't be accommodated on, you know, the, the airport property with its narrowness to, to, you know, stay, stay on that site. So the, quite frankly, the parameters actually are, are, are a little less conservative than they might be, because actually, because it's going off airport property, you know, you could even take a strict interpretation and say it should be, there would be a whole other area that would basically almost exclude all of Chatham. So, so in looking at kind of practicable areas, you know, not placing these under approaches, and again, not say that that couldn't happen with, you know, what's allowed by right, but, you know, from a sighting perspective, to not do that, and then to have the, the, the setback from, excuse me, let's set back the, you know, the, the buffer that was applied for the one and a half kilometers. So again, to maximize, but still find someplace in town where, where we could do that. If the, you know, if it was three kilometers outside, which would be the recommendation, if you had a large enough airport, you would actually place something that could, would be a wildlife attractant, three, three kilometers away from the airport. So that's something too, you know, we might want to consider looking at, you know, that issue if you're also creating, you know, any kind of potential liability. But, but again, I think it's, it's lessened in that you're not doing it on the airport property. And then, and then to the demand, if, if you want me to, so that, again, you know, is that something, you know, outside of the two fishermen who've responded, I think I saw them on the call tonight. Again, you know, we've, in discussions with the Harbor Master, again, we're anticipating that there is some demand, but exactly what that is, I, I don't know that answer. They would probably be better to answer that question. But again, we were trying to size it for someplace we could put it, and then, you know, we reduced the, the number a little bit based on if you restricted it to Chatham-only residents and, and some attrition. And again, using that number of eight, just taking in those factors, looking at the, the names on the, the list, and then I believe one of the, the current, you know, the current demand, you know, we've got 11, 11 permit holders on 10 sites where one, you know, one is shared. And my understanding is one is not going to continue. So again, that, that's where this, that, you know, what, what we put as a test fit in there. But do we have definitive commitments from, from, from folks other than the two that expressed their desire? My answer is, is a point, I don't know. That would probably, you know, the Harbor Master would probably better answer that question.
So, so just, just a couple of follow-ups and Terry, and I apologize if I'm being obtuse here. But, but given the one and a half kilometer stricture, that it's my understanding that the FAA and the Airport Commissioners, or the FAA, those two sites that you came up with are the sites. Otherwise, we have no other options? I mean, is that, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, if you'd like, I can pull up the.
It just, I want to hear, just, just let me know.
Yep. Yeah, so that, yeah, that's essentially, you know, so pulling up, up the graphic. So again, you know, that's the only area, and then we also buffered this for, you know, basically maintaining the existing setback too, assuming a 250-foot setback, what you have at the existing location from any residents as well. As, you know, as it's been talked about, that there's some, you know, there's some, you know, undesirable impacts from, you know, smelling things from various times, although for short duration, but there are some impacts. And then all the other yellow areas here are things like, you know, the community center, the golf course. So things, again, that are not, are not practicable sites. This, this is really the only area. And as you see, even that, some of it's, you know, you know, quite frankly, the eastern cap area is, you know, right on this border of the one and a half kilometers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, I noticed that, and that was somewhat concerned. I mean, if, if these are the, my, my comments in brief are, if these are the locations that we are dealt with, that this is, these are the only possibilities, then I'd be interested in costing out each one of them. But then, I think your rents are going to go up. We're going to rent this, right? And so what's the ceiling on our rent? You're going to put a road in, if you're going to do work, if you're going to, you know, the question about working over a cap landfill is another one. I mean, you know, is that even possible? It's a very good question. I don't know that. So we need engineers to get involved. I mean, you know, to echo Selectmen Matters, you know, I was looking for a little, little, little less complicated solution as well, to be honest with you. So anyway, those are my comments. If those are the only areas, what does it cost? And then what are the engineering difficulties with respect to each area? And how much interest is there really in relocating? Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I have Dean up next, then I have two staff, Stuart and Robert Duncan, and Dr. Bob. Let Dean go first, and then we'll come back and see whether or not Dr. Bob ought to go first or Stuart, but I think Stuart's hand's up first.
Yeah, I was going to, I was, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to defer to Stuart, but I essentially, let me, let me, let me make my comment, because they'll be briefer than they were originally going to be, because Corey and Jeff basically asked a lot of the same questions. I, I think it's going to be important to know how many, how many people need to be accommodated. And it is in your designs, Terry, and I'm not asking for comment at the moment, because I want to hear what Stuart and Bob Duncanson have to say. You're, you're reducing by half the, the total area that is currently accommodated, which, because we have 15 plots at 5,000 square feet a lot, you're going to eight plots at two and a half to 2,500 square feet. That's all going to depend on, you know, who, who wants to relocate to these places and how much, how many, how much and what's the volume of the items that they want to deposit there? From what, from your exchange with Jeff just a moment ago, I take it that these, these particular locations, the two locations lie entirely outside of what I'll call the blue zone. But I do want to ask, is there, is the blue zone an absolute bar to continuing the existing location? I certainly would want to know what the cost of these proposals would be, as Jeff and Corey have alluded to, and what the management of them is going to be like. The second one doesn't seem to have a perimeter fence around it. I'd be concerned about the problem that's present now at the current location, because we've heard there's a lot of trespasser, third-party dumping of material. But let me mention two, two remaining points. You talked about the 250-foot distance from structures. Well, I do remember when we were talking about remodeling, or I'm sorry, reconstruction over at the transfer station. You know, we had members, we had neighbors come before us and express historical concerns about odors and, and I think noise as well. 250 feet, especially if it's going to be an attractive nuisance for wildlife. Maybe nuisance is too strong a term. Adjacent to a residence, I think, is, would be of some concern to the neighbors. So I'm not sure if the, if, if the second site really is going to be particularly ideal. The first site, I have a question, and Bob can answer this, this, when he's, when he speaks, is seems to be at the far end of the, of the final process for, for cleaning the sewage and the sewer water that comes into the system. I toured that water, I think as others have as well, the Water Pollution Control Facility a couple of years ago. Bob gave us a nice tour of the place, and the water comes out crystal clear. It filled this through a bit, through some beds there. And then it, it drains, it runs down toward the Antucket Sound, I think, ultimately. And I just wonder if putting something like this in that vicinity is going to complicate that. So, so there are some environmental concerns, neighbor concerns, cost concerns, management concerns, a whole lot of concerns. And I, Corey has expressed, you know, some, some interest in wanting to know if we're absolutely barred from doing something perhaps less extensive than it is now and better controlled at, at the airport site, whether that's permissible or not. So those are my points, and I'll, I'll let the staff respond. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. I'll, I'll go to Stuart Smith first, since his hand was up first. I just make a comment about the, the, the parcel that's by the airport. That's not a prepared road. I mean, I'm driving up that. It's not exactly prepared, you know. I don't know how, what kind of a road he's thinking of, but I certainly wouldn't think of having, well, maybe you have to according to regulations, but go ahead, Stu.
Good evening. I wonder if, I hope, I don't think it's premature, but it seems like the town needs to make a decision, it's probably the board, as to whether they want to allow just residents of Chatham or include non-residents. I think if you homed in on that, we could go back and get a better sense of how many we're dealing with. We not only have the people that currently rent property, but we do have a waiting list as well. So I'm not sure we're done with that research.
Thank you, Stu. Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, I just wanted to address two of the questions that came up. The first being, could we put something on top of the cap landfill? The short answer is yes, we could. It would require filing what's known as a post-closure use with DEP, which is very, the same thing we did for the solar array. It's what we've done up at DPW for the salt shed, because that, believe it or not, there is actually what DEP considers a landfill up at the DPW site. So it is feasible. It's much easier if we have a design that doesn't require any excavation. And that's what we've been talking about with Terry and I. You know, if we could just put this right on top of the existing soil, you know, maybe put down a six- or eight-inch layer of hardening or something to provide a more stable surface so stuff doesn't kind of sink into the, you know, the soil, but not have to do any digging or excavating. but not have to do any digging or excavating. Then I think that would be permissible by DEP under a post closure use authorization. And then the second comment regarding, you know, any environmental issues at the former soil storage area. And I think soil storage might be a bit of a misnomer, but that is where for years they used to put street sweepings in that gully to kind of, you know, A for storage and B to, you know, kind of fill it in because they used to mine sand out of there for landfill cover when we, before the landfill was finally capped and closed. But in terms of environmental issues, there really wouldn't be any because most of the materials are really, all the materials that would be stored there should be materials that were from the ocean or used in the ocean. They shouldn't have any hazardous materials with them. And that's something we would just have to, that would be part of the management entity, if you will, to ensure that there's no hazardous materials brought into that site. But if it's just, you know, lobster pots and fish nets and stuff like that, yeah, it would have some growth on it, but that would just naturally decay over time. And so wouldn't create any, any environmental concern.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Any other, I see Jeff, I want to, maybe this isn't for Dr. Duncanson, but and I, I don't recall, do we, do we allow only Chatham residents to use the one we're using now?
It's open to any fisherman with a docking.
Okay, so the, the, the list that he was talking about, a waiting list, is kind of like first come, first served.
Yes, and it's based on the amount of space that we have available. And I, you know, the other thing that's going to make it somewhat difficult to gauge potential demand is what the rents may be. You know, right now it's basically $600 a year. But, you know, rent at either of these sites, the town's going to incur some costs. You know, when we're talking about putting in a road, we're talking about basically, you know, flattening it out, removing trees and putting down gravel. We're not talking about paving or anything like that. Just something rudimentary to be able to get access in and out of there. But there's going to be some costs with that. There's going to be some costs to buy the concrete barriers and, and things like that. So if the, you know, the intent is to recoup those costs, that's going to factor into the rent. And, you know, depending on what that rent may be, that may cause some people to drop out saying, you know, I don't want to pay that kind of rent, you know, depending on how long it's, it's say it's prorated over. So, you know, that also may make gauging the amount of interest a little bit more difficult.
Okay, thank you. Jeff's hand was up first and then Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Bob. Bob, I have this quick follow up on the, the filtration beds there up at the water pollution control facility. Would we ever, would, would this, if we use the soil area or either area, would that impact that facility at all in case we needed to expand the filtration beds at all?
No, and that's why in one of Terry's earlier slides, he showed the, the whole northern area basically kind of hash marked. That is the currently approved future expansion area as part of the comprehensive wastewater management plan that DEP approved. And so we, that's, you know, I brought that to everyone's attention. So we kind of took that area off the table as being a potential storage area because it is earmarked by DEP for future sand bed expansion. Now, you know, we could, i- if, if there was interest, we could have a conversation with DEP about using some of that area. But I think it would likely be on a temporary basis. And I mean, you know, 10, 20 years, and then you'd have to have this conversation over again. Because then when, by then, we would probably need that area for sand bed expansion. So it wouldn't be like we can permanently move the fishermen's storage area to those other areas. So that's why we looked at the former soil storage area in the northeast cap as being potential more permanent sites, if you will.
Yeah, just another quick follow up. Sorry, Bob, but, but the soil storage area, that would not need DEP sanction or approval as opposed to the cap area where we, we were putting something on the cap?
It is not part of the actual cap, but it may be part of the, the, the transfer station permitted area. So we could certainly reach out to DEP and have a conversation and find out if we would need to file something. We wouldn't necessarily need to file a post closure use because that's usually for the cap area. But because it, it's part of the landfill transfer station area, we'd probably have to get some kind of approval from DEP.
Yeah, okay. And then quick question for Stuart. I mean, if we, if we know, I would like to get the data. I think we, I think we need to have the data on residents versus non-residents and then also do the same call on a waiting list, Stuart. Just to see how many residents, you know, versus non-residents.
Sure. I, I can, I can get those numbers. Is, is there a, I don't know whether we want to reach out to folks such as non-residents who were not, maybe not going to consider if, so that's why I was looking to see whether the, the town, the board was interested in really offering this to residents or non-residents? Or if that's something you guys are ready to lead us to?
Well, I, I'd like to get the breakdown.
Okay, Dean.
Yeah, thank you. Stuart, do, do we know what other towns do? Do they provide this sort of benefit to their local fishermen or even non-residents in those towns? Do we know?
Last spring, I did receive a call from, I think it was Province Town or Truro, who was interested in offering a similar facility. I don't know where they ended up, but they were interested and they were trying to do, to, to reach out to other communities. I'm not aware of anyone else. There may be, I'm just not aware of that. I, I can find out.
Possible, it's possible we're unique, it sounds like. So we've been talking about residents versus non-residents. There are non-residents who, in addition to their permit applications, I may have, I would assume, maybe not, have a commercial business base in Chatham and they're paying taxes to the town of Chatham.
That's correct. Yeah, there are folks that have, that do that.
Okay. It would be, that might even reduce the number further if we were to limit it just to Chatham residents and Chatham taxpayers.
Yes, I would, I, I would suspect it would. I mean, over, over half of our docking permits or about half are issued to non-residents.
Yeah. And then two questions for Bob. The former, option number one, the former soil storage area, is, are there any residences, residences in the neighborhood? I'm just trying, I'm looking on, on the sketch here. I don't see anything, but no, there's, there's nothing close by because you've got the trans, you have the transfer station, cap landfill in the east. You've got the wastewater treatment plant to the west. You've got the bike path and all on the south side before you get to any residents. So probably, you know, your closest residents would be the ones to the south on the other side of the bike path between there and Route 28. But I think even in that area directly south, that gully continues down. And I don't think there's any immediate resonance right there. They're actually, you know, kind of to the east and west of that gully because that was a natural gully that used to go all the way through under Route 28 and, and basically creates the headwaters of, of Cockle Cove Creek.
How about the other option? What are the closest residences there?
The closest residents there would be the ones that would be on the north side of Middle Road, between, you know, Middle Road and Samurai Road. And you're absolutely correct. That is a neighborhood where we have gotten complaints in the past about odors coming from the transfer station building, you know, especially in the summer when everything's hot and cooking. Yeah, we have gotten some odors from that neighborhood in the past. And that's what Tom and his staff have worked to address over the last couple of years.
If we were to go with option one, the soil storage area, are we, are you pretty satisfied we would not be negatively impacting the operations and processes of, and the results of those processes of the water, water pollution control facility?
Yes, I can't, yeah, I can't see any reason why this use would have any impact on that at all.
Is there any, is there going to be any runoff from the items that are deposited here in, into, I don't mean the physical runoff other than rainwater coming from and, and collecting bacteria or whatever? Any, any of that going to run off into these filter beds that we have?
No, because that, that soil storage area is actually down in a gully. It's about a 15 to 20 foot elevation drop between, you know, where the cap landfill is. Actually, on the cap landfill side, it's probably closer to 30, 40 feet in elevation drop. And then on the treatment plant side, it's probably a good 15 to 20 foot elevation drop. So, you know, in all the locations we looked at, this soil storage area is probably the best because it is at a low elevation compared to all the surrounding areas. So visually, you wouldn't see it as well. Odors wouldn't be as much of an issue. So I have to thank Stuart. He's the one that kind of suggested this possibility.
Where are the beds? They're not displayed on the sketch here. It's to the, obviously to the left, to the, to the west of the.
Yeah, Terry.
I can bring that up.
Yeah, I mean, the beds are pretty obvious. As you want to bring up the one Terry that showed the, it's like the second one, I think, that showed the.
Yeah. I'm sure, hopefully, yeah, so the beds are.
Those areas immediately to the right or to the left.
Okay. How, what's the, what's the distance between the edge of that bed where you now have that cursor to the farther's west of, of these proposed storage areas?
That's probably about 200, 200 feet, 250 feet. And as Bob pointed out, he was very close. It's about, it's about a 20 foot, 15 to 20 foot drop from the bed to the bottom of the ravine area here. And again, if you took from the top of the landfill to the bottom, it's closer to 35 to 40 feet.
Yeah, and as you can see, it's pretty heavily treed too. So that's another reason why, you know, you've got that to screen it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but when the water, water goes into those beds, my understanding from the tour you gave a few years ago to me and Larry Sampson, was it the water would run directly south, southward toward the sound? Is that fair estimate?
What it does is it, it goes straight down to reach a groundwater, which is about 40 to 60 feet away through nice clean sand. And then from there, the prevailing groundwater direction is to the south towards Nantucket Sound. And about 60, yeah, about 60% of the water goes under Cockle Cove Creek and then surfaces directly out in Nantucket Sound. And about 40% surfaces at various points along the Cockle Cove Creek wetland area.
So it's not going into the gully?
No, no, it, it goes straight down to groundwater. Nothing, nothing, we've never seen any evidence of any breakthrough coming out of the gully because it's, it's basically all good, clean sand.
Okay.
Straight down.
Based on everything I heard, and I appreciate you and Stuart and Terry putting this together. It seems to me if we're going to make a change, that this storage area is the least impactful on neighbors and on everyone, frankly. And I, I think if we can, I know Jeff has asked for a breakdown of the, of, of the applicants. I'm, I'm not sure, Jeff, I kind of share Stuart's concern about contacting people that haven't expressed an interest in this. I'd like to keep the numbers as low as possible. It's, I think we need to get a cost estimate, whether we're going to want to try to fully recoup our expenditures from, from the users. I suspect we're not going to be able to do that because I, I think it would be a prohibitive rental fee from them. But I, I, I would, I, I think if we can, and I'd be in favor of limiting it to Chatham residents and taxpayers, not just every permit holder. But those are my, my thoughts on it. I don't know what direction the staff needs tonight. But if I would ask that question, I would say, give us some additional follow up cost and usage information or potential uses information for option number one. And let's forget about the, the, on the cap landfill area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. I'm going to go to Corey, just, I have to just ask a question while we're at it. On the, on, on looking at the, the former soil storage area, is it, is it correct to say it'd be easier to put a, you know, a, a, a road off a middle, a road into the storage area off a middle road than it would be in the other direction coming off the, 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 the other, you know, on the other end where the, the landfill is? And, and, but at the same time, traffic, I don't know how much traffic to be, but there, there would be more traffic, let's say, coming along Middle Road that, that would be impacted than it would be on the other one. That's not, that's not the, the most important criteria for me. And I, and I, I read here that it says, and I, and I think I understand what it meant now because I was going to ask about this. The only earth move, only earth moving on the eastern side of the existing vehicle path would be filling to not compromise the, the, not compromise the landfill. I, I initially, I thought this meant we were going to have to put a lot of landfill in there, but I guess that's not the case. And then I'll go to Corey. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, if I can, it was just really to, to, to move the material around essentially what, what's there to create that kind of level, level bottom. So, and again, it was just like what we were talking about, the staff level of, again, avoiding any kind of penetration in the area. But again, as I think Bob clearly, you know, we would, if we push material into the area that's covered by the broad permit, again, we're not putting it necessarily on the, the cap, but it's, it's within the fully permitted area. So that might require, you know, a letter or filing a plan or something. But the intent would just be, because if, if you looked at the, the graphic again, you know, it's like four, it's a mixed, mixed topography in there. But it's, again, it's just piles of, of, of material that could be smoothed. I'll use that word smoothed out, you know, to, for some way. But again, just to kind of push it from the, from the west to the east is, you know, just to generalize how you would need to move the material to, to get a flatter. It doesn't have to be flat, but a flatter bottom. So that, that's what I was just trying to indicate is that.
Yeah, I was going to the other.
The general concept there is to not be digging into anything, you know, east of the, I'll, I'll call it the existing path because that you have the edge of the cap there somewhere. But we're just, you know, just trying to keep it as, you know, low impact as possible. If that's the right, I don't know, Bob, if that's the right characterization. But it's just, you know, to not disrupt the existing landfill at all.
And in terms of the access road, Peter, the historic access road to that area has been where it currently is on, from the north, so from the middle roadside, if you will, because the, when you come in WPCF Drive, it drops off fairly sharply in a limited horizontal area. So it would take a lot more effort to try to bring an access road in from there than it would be to use the pre-existing one that goes up to the Harbor Master Storage Area. And then we could simply clear a new access road out to Middle Road.
It'd be, and you'd be introducing another bike trail crossing, which, you know, we already have quite a few in a short distance there. So, yeah, but the grade in particular, I think, is even more of a challenge there, as Bob just pointed out.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Corey, sorry, Corey.
No, thank, going back to Stuart's question, I mean, we're, we're dealing with a somewhat limited amount of spaces potentially. So having this limited to Chatham taxpayers and residents, I think is completely reasonable. I think we got to kind of give it some kind of a cap. And I think working within that parameter, I think would make the discussion move forward better. And, and I think it's, I think it's probably the proper way to move, move that discussion forward. So I know, I don't know if we're going to take an official vote on that. But yeah, philosophically, that's kind of where I stand right now. Obviously, I want more details on the cost estimates on some of this, some of these sites. I'm assuming on the northeast cap test fit area, the reasoning behind no fencing and stuff like that is because you're basically using the transfer station perimeter as that safety element. So I guess the question is, if we were to go in that direction, would access to? access to any of the tenants, any mechanics have to be worked out because it's, you know, you're going to a transfer station. You know, also access to your, you know, fishing storage area too. On, if, if the transfer station is closed on Wednesdays, can they get access into the property through a certain gate system? You know, this, obviously some little details that are going to be shaken out. The former soil storage area seems to be a better fit, I think, of the two. So I would probably lean a little bit better in that direction. But again, you know, some more detail would be appreciated. And I think as we flush out the details of these test fit areas, I just want to, you know, just put it out for discussion. Are we 100% closing the door on a recommendation that the existing site is, is completely off the table? I just want to just have that as part of the discussion. I, I fully recognize some of the pushback that we would face on some of that. But I just need to keep that on the table as we maneuver through these two test sites. So those are my thoughts at the moment. You know, philosophically, I, I want to support the fishing industry and do what we can within a reasonable, you know, manner that we're not creating an option for the fishermen at a, you know, exorbitant rental cost that would just prohibit anyone from actually wanting to use it. So I think we, we got to just have some open dialogue with those who want to use it and figure out what a reasonable cost is. And then one closing question is, any of these site improvements that we're looking for, where's the money coming from? That's it for me.
Okay, I see Jeff's hand's still up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify my request to the Harbor Master. I just want to mine the current lessees and those that are on the waiting list and just call them by resident, non-resident. You can call them by, by resident or taxpayer would even be better. I think that's the center of the board. I wasn't looking to have any outreach whatsoever. I just wanted to, I just wanted to see what kind of the breakout is right now. Because we have, we have, if we have, you know, between the current lessees and a waiting list, if we have any residents and 20 taxpayers, then we got a problem. So, you know, so we need to really nail down what the demand is. And I mean, and I'm fully in favor of pursuing costing both options and seeing, you know, how much interest there really is. And I think, Corey, you know, your, your question is, your, you know, persistent question is a good one. Can, is there any wiggle room on the airport? I mean, you gotta absolutely nail that down before we do anything else. So I think, I kind of feeling, I have a feeling we already know the answer, but I think, you know, I think we, I think we need to keep asking. So those are my thoughts. And I wasn't suggesting that we reach out and try to sell lessees plots here. Just want to gauge the interest of current residents and/or taxpayers. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. See, Dean raises his hand. I'm going to interrupt again first before you start. We started with a, with a plot of land which is smaller than it was before, but there were like 11 leases on there. So, you know, and it could be a little bit different. So I mean, at, at any particular time, we're not going to know how many people are going to want it, but probably more than not. So we're, we have two pieces, two places where we can put them. And we can't make it any bigger. So we have to go with, with one or the other. I get a sense of, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm getting a sense that, well, maybe we should lean on one and not do the other. I was leaning on shiny cost both. I don't know if that's, I feel that way now. Only because of what I've heard. And if I, if I make a generalized statement that says, okay, it would appear to me that if I was going to take, you know, a rough order of magnitude cost, that going, going to the, the, the former soil storage area would be less costly. And that's, that's what's going through my head right now. If, if that's the case, that's fine. If that's not the case and we don't know it, we don't know it to a, you know, some sort of a good number like 60 or 70%, then I guess we should go to costs for both of them. And, and I think it's, personally for me, it's, it's, it's not unreasonable for us to say taxpayers and those, I mean, residents and non-tax, and taxpayers, non-resident taxpayers. So that's my thought. I don't know if we have any consensus, but Dean has his hand up. Go ahead. Uh, you're on, you, sorry.
Thank you, Peter. And thank you, Jeff, for clarifying the request on the numbers. You know, I don't see how I could support the second option. You know, we've had several presentations from the DPW about the transfer station. We've heard from neighbors express their concerns. We're talking about spending a lot of money to make the transfer station, transfer station safer, less unsightly. We've done a lot to try to reduce the, the negative impact in terms of odors on, on the neighborhood. I can't see that it makes any sense to introduce this over to that area. And I don't know what it's going to be entailed, what would be entailed in trying to come up with a cost estimate, but I don't really see the point of doing a cost estimate on that. I mean, if the majority of the board wants to pursue that, fine. But that's how I feel about it. I was inclined to offer a motion to instruct the staff to come up with a proposal for the storage, soil storage area after they've run the numbers, examined the cost and, and, and can, and, and that would be conditioned on a final determination of whether location on the continuing the airport location is, is still out of, out of, you know, not in, not in question. But if the board feels differently, I'm not going to offer that motion at the moment. But if the board feels differently and wants to pursue the second option, I, I just don't really see the point of it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's viable from a policy standpoint, standpoint of good policy, even if it's cheaper.
Okay, Corey.
No, I, 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 I can agree with that comment. I, I know the northeast cap test fit area may very well bring up some conversations with the neighbors that would cross another hurdle, create another hurdle in the conversation, which is a delay that we probably don't want to look for. We also want to be a conscience of past conversations that have happened with the neighbors in that area. So I think just from a mechanical and philosophical perspective, narrowing it down to the former soil storage area, test fit area, along with a definitive determination on the existing site, probably there are two best options. And I would put our resources in that, in that fashion. And, and I would not put too much time or energy into the test fit area over by the, within the transfer station. But I think there's some, some mechanical logistical issues that may arise, rise from doing it over there anyway. That makes it less desirable for me, aside from the previous mentioned concerns. So I, I could support a motion of that sense. Yes.
Jeff.
I was just going to add to, to the argument for the soil testing, soil area that we'd have to get DEP to do the cap area as well. And you have to get their permission. So you just have another hoop to jump, jump through there. So I would support that, that soil area you guys and with, as articulated by Selectman DeCastro, I would support that.
Okay. We have any other discussion? If not, Dean, you want to make the motion and include the part about the existing area?
Yeah, we'll put a motion on the table. And just one other point about the inadvisability, and I appreciate Jeff's comment just now, the inadvisability of the, the capped area is, you know, that's, this is not a disposal use. And the people in the neighborhood bought their houses knowing that there was a transfer station there and, and previous to that, a dump. But they certainly weren't expecting that the town at some point would place a facility there that was going to be an attraction for wildlife and other, other issues. So I, I move that the board instruct the staff to proceed with an evaluation and proposal of the former soil, former soil storage area for the fishermen's storaged facility, conditioned on a determination that the current location at the airport is definitively not permissible. An implicit in the motion is that you would take a look at the, the numbers, the cost, the physical work that would have to be done and so forth. But that's the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add that we find a source of funding or ID potential sources of funding in that motion as well.
I'll, I'll accept that a minute.
And the second, Corey, yeah, accept that. Okay. Jill, did you want to have a comment before we vote?
No, it's just that we don't have an identified source of funding. And the only other thing I want to add, and I, and Terry might have said this, that the Airport Commission extended the use of the Fisherman Storage Area to June 30th, 2022. So we have a little bit of time, but not much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's go with a vote. I'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. You go. Thank you, Terry and Stuart and Dr. Dunkinson. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is moving ahead with a consider request to join a multi-district PFAS litigation. And I just make the comment that this is a continuation of our, our executive committee meetings that had some discussions and looked at information about that. We're bringing it forward to have our, forward in public. I guess to me, and I, comments, to me, it's, we have, we have a couple of decisions that could be put into one motion. And one is should Chatham do this? And who's the preferred law firm? And I see that our counsel, Pat Costello is on, and I'll turn it over to him if he's available right up. Welcome, Pat.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Well, as we discussed previously, there, there's multi-district litigation ongoing right now, which means there have been lawsuits filed in multiple different federal courts across the country relative to PFAS contamination. The defendants in these lawsuits are the manufacturers of, of the chemicals, indoor products that contain these forever chemicals, PFOS, as they're generically known. And these lawsuits are seeking damages to reimburse communities, primarily water districts, our towns that provide public water supplies and cities for costs and expenses that they've incurred as a result of disruptions in their water supplies and for any other potential damages they may have incurred. We have received a couple of outreach brochures and letters of interest to engage Chatham as a client from two different law groups. Each of the law groups is comprised of large firms from all over the country that, that consolidate or join together and represent a group of clients, many clients, oftentimes dozens of, of clients in these lawsuits. The lawsuits that are filed in various district courts are consolidated for the purposes of efficiency in the litigation. Since the claims are, if not virtually identical, very similar in nature, the courts deem it appropriate to consolidate them into a single proceeding. And they're called multi-district litigation, as noted. And what will happen is a period of time will be allowed for discovery and other investigative activities to go forward before a, a test case, if you will, or a trial case is, is set up for actual full trial and a verdict from, from a jury in all likelihood. The two consortiums of law firms that have reached out to us, as you know, Richard Sandman of Rodman, Rodman and Sandman is a local representative of one of the groups. He, I believe, first contacted us back in July. And we have subsequently heard from a consortium of lawyers, Napoli Skolnick, that KP Law is involved with, and they submitted a, and again, a proposal letter to us more recently, just a, a couple of weeks ago. And some background information about the respective law firms involved in that group. There, there, to be honest with you, there, there's a great deal of experience in, in this type of litigation amongst both consortiums of law, law, law firms. The, the Sandman proposal drew particular interest in my mind because they, that group, we'll call it the Sandman group for the purposes of this discussion, since he's our primary contact person. They do represent the two largest water suppliers on the Cape, Barnstable and Falmouth already. And I did have a recent discussion with Attorney Sandman, and he indicated to me that they're also awaiting several other commitment letters from other communities on the Cape to join their group. The Napoli Skolnick group does not represent any communities in southeastern Mass. The closest communities they have are Brockton and Easton, and then they, they represent several communities out in central Massachusetts. The only reason I mention that is, as we all know all too well, Cape Cod has a very unique geohydrologic circumstance with regard to our aquifer and water supply situation. And I do think it might be somewhat relevant that a law firm that's already engaged on behalf of other communities on the Cape and would have engaged in significant investigative work and other discovery with regard to those communities may have a bit of a foot up on, on representing Chatham and investigating our particular situation and representing our interests in the litigation. The, there's no question that both, both groups of lawyers are, are qualified. It's really a matter of preference and which, which group our consortium appeals most to the board. The, the, once the town is joined in the litigation, we're in effect, for lack of a better way of putting it, thrown into a pool of like governmental entities. That's how the ultimate disposition of these cases are handled in terms of the dispersment of proceeds. There are state governmental entities involved. There are local governmental entities, whether they are cities, towns, regional districts and what have you. And the, the court will allocate proceeds of any settlements or verdicts that are rendered with regard to these actions amongst the various litigants, the plaintiff governmental entities in an equitable and fair manner, based certainly on the level of costs that have been incurred by the, the respective plaintiffs, but also based on, on the nature of, of the governmental entity itself. I do believe that for the most part, whether we're represented by one firm or the other, the, in the end, we will be treated the same as other like situated communities. So even with respect to attorney's fees and, and such, the court will ultimately decide what the attorney's fees are to be awarded as a result of settlements or verdicts. And again, I think the judges in these MDLs typically strive to maintain equality and fairness amongst the various plaintiff governmental agencies who participate in the litigation. Chatham is definitely a viable candidate for this litigation because we have documented impacts to our water supply from PFAS contamination. I believe that that is an incentive for law firms to, you know, solicit our retainer by them because we, we do have a very likely chance of recovery in this action based on the fact that we've already incurred costs. The law firms will assist us in investigating the nature and extent of the contamination that has occurred in Chatham. And they will represent our interest. They will, they will represent Chatham throughout. Chatham throughout. And, uh, I, I am quite confident in saying that the first and foremost goal of any plaintiff's lawyer in these types of cases is to achieve a settlement with the defendants. That's, that's a much more effective, quicker and more cost-effective way to bring these types of litigations to final closure. Uh, the time is running, I will say, because these cases are already open. Uh, parties are certainly still permitted to join, but I do understand that at least one, uh, trial of regarding one community's contamination as sort of a model case is anticipated to commence, um, early next year in, in 2022. So I do believe that it's, it's incumbent upon the town to, to act as quickly as possible. Certainly, th- this is not in any way, shape or form going to be a rash decision for the town. I, I, I do believe that the, the, as I noted earlier, the, the respective council groups are very well experienced, well qualified in this particular area. Not only are they representing multiple communities in this PFAS litigation, they have also, uh, been involved in the past with the, uh, MTBE litigation with, uh, you know, the opioid, opioid litigation, which is currently pending, and, uh, several other, um, nationwide, um, environmental contamination cases. So, uh, that's the general situation in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, I see Dean's hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Pat, for the presentation and, uh, appreciate the background information.
There's a little background.
Sorry?
I, there's background always was hard to hear you. I, you may.
Can you hear me now?
I think you're shuffling papers. There's, there's papers that are covering your microphone, Dean, I think.
And how about now?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'll start over. Uh, uh, thank you, Pat, for the presentation and thanks to, uh, you and Jill for the, um, background information that you provided to us. The board has met in, uh, twice an executive session about this, uh, litigation. And, um, I'm, I'm very comfortable in thinking that the town should participate. Um, I think the, uh, as you point out, the town has documentable costs and losses that put us forward as a good candidate for this. Uh, the arrangements that have been articulated, uh, in, from both firms would stand the town in good shape from, uh, from a financial point of view. I don't want to get into the nature of the agreement because I understand that those are confidential drafts at this point, but I don't think we're going to be, um, uh, um, acting irresponsibly from a financial standpoint in terms of how this litigation puts, is put forward. Um, and finally, um, with respect to, um, the choice of law firm, I, I, my preference would be to go with the Sandman Firm, the Sandman Group. They're both, they both look very, um, commendable in terms of what the needs are, but I like the fact that Mr. Sandman's firm itself is a, a Massachusetts-based law firm of longstanding. Uh, and, uh, and that, um, as you point out, the towns of Falmouth and Barnstable have retained that group, and they are intimately familiar with these, the PFAS problem on the Cape. So, um, my preference would be to go in that direction. I won't, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dean. I see, uh, Corey's next, and then Jeff, and then Shereen.
Peter. Um, no, like, like we said, we've talked about this in executive session. So this is kind of just the open acknowledgement of, of where those philosophical discussions went to. Um, I do think the town should engage in, in an attorney and move forward in this. And, um, you know, I do agree that the, we'll call it the Sandman, uh, uh, group, uh, is the better choice. Um, I think clearly, um, with their being retained already by Barnstable and Falmouth, uh, there's a clear connection. And, and I guess potentially other communities on the Cape maybe, may also be retained at some point. Um, so I think the mechanics just make a better fit, um, for that, our situation. So I'm not going to prolong any long discussion, but I would say we move forward and, uh, we retain, uh, the Sandman, Rodman, Rodman, and Sandman, uh, entity, uh, to move forward with the Chatham's represent, representative, representation, uh, in this lawsuit, potential litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Pat. That was a good summary and, uh, as, as been articulated by Selectmen de Castro's and Metter's, we've banded this one a- about quite a bit. And I'm fully in favor of, uh, joining the multi-district litigation. And I'm fully in favor of and support the, the choice of Sandman. Again, I, I, I think that the fact that they are familiar and have been hired by Falmouth and Barnstable and the fact that we're very familiar with our sole source aquifer here on the Cape and the unique, uh, geography and the unique, uh, sole source aquifer that we have here, you know, is kind of a no-brainer for me. So I am very supportive and, uh, um, I, you know, uh, I'm sure Dean will have a motion in just a sec, but that we'll move forward and, 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 and get an agreement with, uh, with Sandman. Thank you very much. Good job.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Shereen?
Hi, I, I just, I'm going to repeat everybody else's sentiments here. I guess we're pretty much on the same, uh, page. I believe we need to move forward and I, I believe we should move forward with the Sandman Group, uh, simply as everybody had stated because of there are the local, they have a local entity, uh, presence here, um, in Massachusetts, and they are representing, um, some local, uh, Cape Cod communities.
Thank you, Shereen. I'll just echo what everyone else says. I'll just make a couple of points that, that, you know, I, I think it's in the, I believe it's in the town's best interest to do this. And PFAS problem is, it's just not as an understatement, it's an overstatement is, this is a huge federal problem. Uh, and it's not going away. And it's not one of those fly-by-night types of, of lawsuits. Uh, the federal, federal agencies are finally getting on, on board to try to set some sort of standard. So I think for sure, we have to be part of this. If we weren't, uh, I think it would be, I'll go as far as saying, would be irresponsible. Uh, I am, it's fair to say that, that there's no upfront cost, just, just to be sure.
That's correct.
And I believe that, that we should go with Sandman for all the reasons that were said and for all the, uh, extra, uh, the additional information that you provided, Pat. So, uh, Dean, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the motion as prepared by Shawna. I move that the town of Chatham join the multi-district PFAS litigation and authorize the town manager and town council to negotiate services agreement with the firm of Rodman, Rodman and Sandman PC.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? If not, let's, uh, take it to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. And, and thank you, Pat, and thank you for all the information and also the work that, that, that Jill was involved with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. Uh, we're last two areas we're looking at. The first one has to do with extensions of seasonal liquor licenses. And Shawna, do you want to just say anything?
Sure. The extensions of these three seasonal licenses is allowed by Mass General Law and, um, has been approved by the board on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Discussion? We have a, Shereen?
I'm going to make a motion. I think this has been a, a routine sort of event that's occurred, um, year after year, but also I think that extends, if a, if a restaurant is asking for an extension in these times, I think we should be supportive of it. So I'm going to move to approve the extensions of seasonal liquor licenses for Pace Restaurant until Ju- January 15th, 2022, for the Bistro on Main until January 15th, 2022, and the Captain's Table until January 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Shereen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? Corey?
No, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I just want to, you know, take this opportunity just to put it out there for the public that, you know, the request for an extension of a seasonal license to January 15th of the, of the following year must be received in writing by the LLA before November 30th. So any other entity out there that's considering this, realize you're on the clock. Um, you know, then file it before the 30th because we understand the circumstances of this year. I, I think this board would be very supportive of it, but, um, our hands are tied with some of the mechanics of it. So just make sure people out there who want to also do something of the similar, um, take, get, get, talk to Shawna ASAP. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. The only comment I'll make, and it has to do with the one that's coming up next too, is, uh, it'll be an observation and, uh, these, these liquor licenses have been extended and basically it, it's, it's good. We'll have the business for up a, a total of over nine months, which is fine because it's, it's, it's allowed. So let's take a vote. Uh, Dean?
Aye.
Uh, Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Next one, and our final one is temporary closings of establishments holding annual liquor licenses. And again, Donna, any comments?
Uh, just that the local regulations require any, um, establishment holding an annual license that is, would like to close for more than two weeks to receive permission from the Board of Selectmen to do so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments or motions? Shereen?
I'll make a, I'll make the motion again. Um, let me just find it so I can read it. Uh, I move to approve the temporary closings of Chatham Filling Station from January 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2022. The Chatham Cheese Shop, um, December 31st, 2021 through March 15th, 2022. The Wayside Inn, January 3rd, 2022 through February 3rd, 2022. Hanger Bee Eatery, February 1st, 2022 through February 28th, 2022. And Branches Grill and Cafe from February 1st, 2022 through February 28th, 2022.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, just make my same observation. The, the, uh, the two top, uh, restaurants that are here are closing and they're full-time. They'd be using your liquor licenses nine months to nine and a half months. It's no judgment. It's just an observation. And, and, uh, and that's it. Any other discussion?
Do we have a second or not?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote. Uh, Corey? Oh, you have a hand up, Corey. I'm sorry.
No, 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 just to, just to follow up on your, I, I know, I know one of the applicants, uh, you know, if there was a, if there was a seasonal license available, they would have applied for a seasonal license. It's not available. So this is kind of status quo for the, for them to some level. Uh, and the other one, I think that's accentuating circumstances this year that I think the board should be supportive of. So, you know, next year's a different discussion, but for this year, I don't have any issue with these, um, extended closures.
Yeah, either do I. It was just to, you know, a comment to just keep it in, at least in my mind. And I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And that's it for tonight. Uh, I see Jill popped up. Anything besides before I, I sign off? No.
No, just to say thank you and goodbye to everybody.
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Uh, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Same.
Right, a motion?
Uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Happy, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy the holiday. Enjoy the weekend. And let me take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good evening, Chatham. And again, have a happy Thanksgiving.